I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You good?
Yep, I'm good. Okay, welcome to city council. All the smiles on your faces right there. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. And certify a quorum, we got a quorum. We do have a consent agenda on the agenda tonight, treasurer's report, approval of minutes of January 25th, 2022, and approved payment of the bills. If we can have the treasurer's report, please.
The treasurer's report, February 8th, 2022, payable checks in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. Major vendor checks, four of them, representing sixty-four percent of the payable checks in the amount of thirty-one thousand, one, uh, seventy-three dollars and sixty-six cents. Payroll for February 4th, conclusion social security and Medicare. Taxes, one hundred and ninety thousand, twenty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Grand total payable checks and payrolls, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
Okay, get a motion to approve the consent agenda. Walter makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification discussion call roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
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 Linda?
Yes.
Teresa?
Teresa should be on.
Teresa?
Okay, moving right along. Uh, all the new business, uh, three point one, we got an ordinance approving the sale and delivery, the city of St. Robert from Missouri, refunding certificates. So that's Mr. McClainy. I don't know what happened to the podium, but we lost it, I guess.
You gotta, you gotta spin around when you're talking.
It's good for you.
I'm just kidding. They're everywhere.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Eddie McClainy. I'm with McClainy Company in Kansas City. You may recall, I was here towards the fall last year to discuss refunding your outstanding two thousand and seventeen COPs, at least purchase issue. What I wanted to do is move this as fast as possible because interest rates were climbing. They're climbing quick, they're climbing quickly. And we wanted to get this thing done before your call, the call date. You're allowed to do it three months before your call date, which is on at five one. So the earliest we could do this was in February. That's when we wanted to do it. This first page is your outstanding debt that I passed out. And it shows your principal and interest ask you as it is that we get nothing done. Some of the first part of course is already paid, but started in five one twenty-two, starting in eleven one twenty-one. The page two is the new issue. It's, we have seven maturities. We're shortening your issue a little bit. We have seven maturities. They, each maturity has a different interest rate. The average of all of those is one point two seven. Substantially less than what you're paying now. We're able to get, because of the quality of your account, because of strength of your audits, and the property that we're using as collateral, we were able to get this issue insured by a firm called Insured Guarantee. What that does is gives you a double A rating. Having a double A rating gets the lowest possible interest rate. The only thing greater than a double A rating is a triple A rating. Insured, you, yeah, you can't get a triple A rating. Very, very, you, the state of Missouri may be triple A. Locally, that'd be triple A. To have a double A for an insured, for a lease purchase, you get a fantastic rating to get. And again, that's because the city is run so well. You have a good balance sheet, you have a good income expenses, the, you have good collateral for this. This, you have a very strong credit. A lot of, most communities cannot get insurance. And we've worked very hard on being able to get you in position for that to happen. Page three is kind of the nuts and bolts. The first column, new debt service of your new issue. The old debt service is what we're paying off. The annual savings, now that first year is a negative. The reason the first year is a negative is because we are paying, doing this a little bit earlier than we normally would to get the low, to get these lower interest rates. So the city will be having to transfer their normal, uh, five one payment. So we're doing it ahead of time to get the lower interest rate, but they're still will be responsible for the five one payment. Plus, we are taking the reserve account that you had outstanding. Although it was set up to pay off your debt in your last maturity, we're going to take that and we're using that to lower the issue as well. So it's, because it's no longer going to be available to you, we have to use that as a negative number. You end up, the annual savings is just under a hundred and forty thousand dollars, about forty thousand dollars a year, as you can see each year. We present value that to the interest rate on your new issue, and that's equivalent to a hundred and three hundred and four thousand dollars. A substantial savings on an issue this small. The last page shows kind of the breakdown of the numbers again. The new issue is two million, thirty thousand. That's the old reserve that I mentioned and the, and the five one payment. So the, the cost of the escrow, the, uh, expenses of issuance. That's my fees, that's attorney fees, that's the trustee fees, that's everything associated with it. Total debt service again, which is his, that savings that we saw on the page before. Present value. That, these last two numbers are a percentage. Anytime that number is at three percent is a time to refinance your debt. This is a few, four, almost five. I have seen other firms willing to do it at one and one and a half. I wouldn't do it at one and one and a half unless there's another, another reason to do it. This is a strong savings, joint for. It is a, it, and it is like, honestly, a savings like this is we was, like walking down the street, taking up money and dealing it in your pockets. It's, we're lowering your costs, we're lowering your annual fees. Yeah, and in fact, it is, yes, an awesome way to move this forward and save money for your taxpayers. One thing that is very nice about this, very attractive, your three local banks all participated substantially. They grew, they very, they, they all bought a very substantial portion of this debt. And then it went market elsewhere after they had the first opportunity to buy.
Is this on the new purchase or the old?
This is on the new issue.
Old?
Mm-hmm, yes. And so that, I always like, and it, and the city has for years, and we've asked them to give your local banks the first opportunity. Once again, there's a good reason to do that, because they participate. You're very, very fortunate to have such participation locally. We have the ordinance down that needs to be passed, and that's why I'm here, if you have any questions.
Any questions? Not to read the bill.
Bill number twenty-two dash zero zero five, an ordinance approving the sale and delivery of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, refunding certificates of participation, series two, twenty twenty-two, and authorizing and approving certain other documents and actions by the city.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion. Todd seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Good.
Linda?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-two dash zero zero five, an ordinance approving the sale and delivery of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, refunding certificates of participation, series twenty twenty-two, and authorizing and approving certain other documents and actions by the city.
Get a motion on the second reading. John makes a motion. Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Good.
And Linda?
Yes.
Read us an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three eight one seven, an ordinance approving the sale and delivery of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, refunding certificates of participation, series twenty twenty-two, and authorizing and approving certain other documents and actions by the city.
Okay, get a motion. Uh, Walter makes a motion. Todd seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Good.
Yes.
And I signed all that stuff, Eddie.
Thank you very much.
Okay, three point two is an ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment of account at the transfer station. Ricky's not here, but this is for Eugene C. Tilgen Company. They're doing some construction demolition out there, Post. Read us the bill, please.
Bill number twenty-two dash zero zero six, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for monthly payment on account at St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the first reading. John makes a motion. Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Good.
Linda?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number twenty-two dash zero zero six, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for monthly payment on account at the St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading. Uh, Michael makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Good.
Linda?
Yes.
Read us an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three eight one eight, ordinance authorizing an agreement for monthly payment on account at the St. Robert Transfer Station.
Okay, get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Reggie makes a motion. Todd second. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Good.
Linda?
Yes.
Okay. Three point three is an ordinance accepting the bid of Joshua Post for painting at the St. Robert Community Center. Anita, you want to tell them what you got?
That is for doing the kitchen, the main body, the stage area, and the steps going up the stage area.
Repaying it all?
We got three bids, four bids on it, actually.
Okay. Any questions? No? Read us the bill, please.
Bill number twenty-two dash zero zero seven, an ordinance accepting the bid of Joshua Post for painting at the St. Robert Community Center and authori, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Get a motion on the first reading. Linda makes a motion. Todd seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Good.
Linda?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-two dash zero zero seven, an ordinance accepting the bid of Joshua Post for painting at the St. Robert Community Center and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Get a motion on the second reading. Michael makes a motion. Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Good.
Linda?
Yes.
Yep.
So we're, at the next committee meeting, wage finance, we need a wage finance?
Talk when you already have.
Okay, read us a bill, or an ordinance.
Ordinance number three eight one nine, an ordinance accepting the bid of Joshua Post for painting at the St. Robert Community Center and authorizing mayor, the mayor to enter into a contract.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Reggie makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Charles?
Discussion. I got a question about the, uh, generator, um, and the kilowatts.
No, that's, that's not on this.
We're still doing the painting at the community center.
Okay. But now, it appears to be attached to it.
No, it's, it's not. It's the annual report from Steve for, um, uh, net metering. The net metering report.
So it's, it's, uh, it's, it should have been, okay, no problem. Yes.
Um, Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Good.
Linda?
Yes.
Okay, now, we move on. Next wage finance. Ed, anything? No?
No.
Public works, Steve, anything going on? In committee meeting? Emergency services, nobody here?
Knock on the door.
Okay. Park committee?
Fourteenth at four thirty here at the council chambers.
Wow, Valentine's Day.
Oh. Okay, comments by all of them, and we'll start with Linda tonight.
Me?
Yes.
I don't have anything, I don't think. I've already talked to Steve about sun.
Walter?
I think we handled the snow pretty well.
Yes.
So I think everything will look good.
Yep.
No problem. Like sunshine.
Yep. Michael? Reggie?
Echo, he said, Butler did a great job doing the snow.
Charles? I want a motion that, uh, the mayor and our city administrator receive a, a raise. Based on the fact that everyone that works for the city received a, a raise. And, um, they have been working pretty hard, uh, over the last year that I've been sitting up here. And, uh, the mayor has worked even when he was sick and incapacitated. And Anita has done a tremendous job herself, uh, with the, uh, acquisition of certain, uh, businesses to the city. And I want to present that motion to the council.
Well, it can't be a motion because, uh, the council, I have no authority over, you're the one of those. That's a council vote that has to be just prior to the next election. And, uh, then the raise doesn't go into effect until after the next election, who's their elected mayor. And Anita is my appointed person, so I make that decision on the pay.
So. Yeah. I mean, it's, I, you know, I hear you, Charles, and I, I don't disagree with you, but there, there is a way to do it, and that, that, that's not quite it, so. I do agree with you. They've done a great job. There's a, actually a-
Appreciate that. Nice, kind thoughts.
Statue for it.
Nice, kind thoughts.
As tested by the man that was just here and said that the city is being run so well, I mean, it didn't get run by itself. It takes people to do that, and I think Anita and, you know, mayor are gonna-
The last week, Anita's been extremely busy. Extremely busy.
Well.
I think everybody in room with three did, definitely did a great job, but, uh, yes, we have the, uh, proceedings.
So, so when would be the time to, um-
Probably in the falls.
In the fall.
Yeah.
In the fall?
Yeah. Yeah.
You're gonna have to start telling me the names.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Comments, uh, where are we at? Todd?
Todd. Yeah, I just echo on what Walter said, you know, and I, I even, I texted Steve because I knew he was probably busy, but, um, now I'm telling you guys, they got out there and they got after it, um, and, and they got busy, and then even the next day when they came in, you know, cleaned up cul-de-sacs and, and stuff like that. Your guys did an outstanding job. Um, and, and, but it's, it's, it's always that way when, when they're out there doing snow removal. You guys, you know, were the, uh, you know, just like some of the other people, you know, nobody really appreciates, you know, all those guys on, on that equipment until they need to get somewhere in the middle of that snowstorm, so, um, hats off to you. You guys did a fantastic job. I, I appreciate it.
Twenty-four hours in the last seven years, I think it was, two thousand and eleven. Guess that's longer than that, eleven years.
You guys got after it, and you did a great job, so, thank you.
John?
Nothing to do, no shit.
Okay. Okay, comments by city clerk, finance officer.
In your packet, you see there the, um, annual net metering report of the connections in the city of St. Robert. Um, this report is one of two annual requirements by state law under the, uh, net metering law for the state. The first, um, requirement is that we have to notify each customer of the availability of this service, of the cities for them. And the second one is this annual, annual report I have to get to the board of all of them in detail, the number of, the number of net metering customers, the estimated total capacity of these, um, systems.
This is solar panels, right?
Yeah, that's correct. That's installed in the city. And then the estimated kilowatts, hours that the city receives from these solar panels, from the net metering services. Um, the city adopted and approved a net metering program in, uh, in May of twenty sixteen, so. This is a report I have to get to you and then forward this one to MPU.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And I want to say, we, I think we installed two new customers in twenty twenty-one.
Anything else?
She emails everything out to, I'm not even sure if she sends it all out to.
We're getting done.
So the Joe citizen out there wants to watch it online, and we've said that in a minute, but it's all wrong.
Oh, I'm-
Every time I try this, they need someone to work.
Teresa, you're on.
Can you mute?
Wait.
Well, you're not on picture, just your name showing up.
You might want to mute, you can't be, your, uh, mic.
Yeah.
Hello?
Hello.
Who's that?
It's Teresa. Teresa.
And to ask her if she can hear you. Teresa, can you hear us? Teresa?
All right, I'm on now, John, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Oh, Lisa. Okay.
Okay. Okay, we're down to, uh-
I have the financial report, man, sorry. The reported taxable sales in the city of St. Robert through the month of February twenty twenty-two is fifty-two million, eight hundred and four thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. This is a twenty-three point, one nine percent increase over twenty twenty-one.
Just for the month, right?
Two months.
For two months, okay.
The month of February, we received a twenty-eight point eight percent-
Hello? Can you hear me?
Over last year.
Yes, we can hear you.
And you're gonna be talking with Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. This was actually December sales that, that was reported. So that was about sixty, sixty-two thousand dollars we received, more than we received last year.
Okay.
Right. The used tax, um, we received thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars for the month, for the summer sales. And that's it? Um, nothing. Balance in the operating account stands at two point seven million.
Okay, thank you. Okay, human resources, Erica. Erica.
I have nothing, but thanks for the snow removal, Steve.
Okay.
So that next time, don't push it in my driveway.
Steve Long?
What'd she say?
Don't push the snow in your driveway.
That's what I was gonna say. That's what I want to talk to him about when we get done.
Okay.
But I'll just talk to him Friday, and I was just talking.
Okay, Steve.
I just, uh-
Moving right along.
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to kind of go over what we, what we done before this, kind of like a pre-storm, um, scenario, is what we, what we, uh, done right before the storm, the day before, actually. We set up the generator at the community center, got it up, uh, checked voltage, uh, made sure it was gonna work in case the, the community center needed to be a warming station. Um, we had that one broke pole in town, uh, so we did get the digger truck put on that and stabilized it, just in case, uh, we did get some icing and then we put a little extra weight on that. We installed, uh, tire chains on the, the two large pop trucks, so they was ready to go, for, because we knew we was gonna get ice first. And then, uh, we had, we got all the, um, other chains for the smaller trucks out and ready. We didn't chain up those trucks, because we figured they could get around. If it got too bad, we could chain those up pretty quickly. Um, we checked, uh, fuel in the police department generator, uh, made sure it was ready to go. We checked run and, um, gassed up, uh, the, we have two generators down at, little, small portable generators down at Shasta that, one is standby for the fuel pumps. In case the power goes out, we can still get fuel. And one is a, uh, standby generator for the, uh, refrigerator for the police department, so they'll still have communication, so if the power goes out, we can still use it. That's about it on what we done right before the storm. Of course, when it hit, then, uh, you know, we, we did, uh, check one of the trucks, um, after a twelve-hour shift, and it didn't run right at a hundred and ten miles in twelve hours, so.
Hmm.
So that's kind of a scenario of how many miles they, they run around town. Um. I think we only had like one or two frozen meters during that, uh, cold snap, so. Uh, and they was, they thawed out pretty fast, so it wasn't, uh, the deep hard freeze like we seen last year. And I think that's, that's all I have. Oh, I did have, uh, we was checking on some guard rail for a, um, uh,
Ridge Creek.
Big hill going up in the Ridge Creek area. It's a hundred and fif, or eight hundred and fifty linear feet of, uh, guard rail that would be needed. I did get two different prices. One was for a galvanized material, and one was for a, in case we wanted to have black, so it'd be a powder-coated black material. The galvanized rail with the ends, and this is all installed, was forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the, um, powder-coated black one was sixty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. So that's for eight hundred and fifty feet of, of that, of that little section.
Does it have to be the whole road, like the right side of the road?
Just the-
Yeah, it's the right side of the road. It's a real steep bank. There's cars that go over there several times, usually one or two a year.
But it, but it's not that way all the way up the hill, is it?
Yeah, from the bottom all the way to the top. Yeah. And we just had to widen and put the streetlights and ran the power up through there, so now there's not trees that they can hit, so. Well.
That was stopped.
Uh, I think it's a good bid for forty-two thousand. We'll put it on the agenda for next time. You want to get it to Anita?
Yeah.
And, uh-
Yeah, I don't care.
What's the status of the bulldozer, Steve?
What's that?
What's the status of the bulldozer?
Um, talked to him today. Um, we're hoping we'll have it next week sometime, possibly Tuesday. I know the storm did, um, make it difficult for him to go retrieve it where it was at, so. The job site is on EPA, uh, job site, and, uh, I know it was pretty, it was pretty nasty when it was there, so I imagine the storm really, really made it worse, so. So he's, I think he's got it back in Springfield now and, and, um, going through all the checks and, and everything on it, so we're hoping we'll have it back next Tuesday.
And he ordered parts for the other one, the one we own already, and they're all, both over a year, so. He ordered them from two places to see which one we can get quicker, but, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Don, IT?
Just been, uh, trying to get the peeling system of the fire, and she's working on everything else around here. That's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Ricky's not here. I think he's got a log of, uh, total tonnage. He's been doing over two fifty for the last four or five days. And, uh, they've been running five and six drivers to Hartville, and he's got ten trailers full, and, uh, there's still a hundred and twenty pounds, or a hundred and twenty tons on the floor over there. So they're gonna run six drivers again tomorrow. So they've been really, really busy, plus picking up trash. Then, of course, we had to cancel Waynesville's Friday, I think it was Friday, Thursday and Friday, and they're just doing it this next week. Because it's snow roots, we couldn't get any, uh, we closed the city Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Uh, transfer station stayed open Wednesday, and then, uh, Thursday and Friday they came in and, uh, did some stuff, but, uh, not much of any. They stayed pretty busy.
Yeah. Only unrelated subject, I just happened to think, uh, did the bus drivers up here come up with their own plan to transfer students up here?
Yes. Yeah, that's the, the school plan. That's not, they think we're involved in, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Transportation that-
Did the first year their plan, when they got?
I guess. I've never seen them unload up here.
No, yeah.
It was last year, too.
Did they?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
During the, uh, route.
So I'll give you a great rap, but-
During the snow route.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just on snow days. Okay, or in snow routes. Okay, Stephanie? Park department?
Um, not much on the parks. Um, we do have, um, a couple of adults, um, that are in part for, uh, adult swim lessons. Um, so, um, probably just gonna give the swim instructor to see if they don't mind giving adult swim lessons for adults that would like to learn how to swim. And, um, we just ask that you, uh, keep pushing, um, the information out for the KCBS. Uh, we do need, uh, raffle tickets to get sold for the grill that's supposed to get raffled out. So if you would like to help sell these or raffle tickets, um, Mark has them in the office, so you can scale with Mark and pick up some tickets.
You good?
You forgot Friday, you're reporting.
The most sponsors. Oh, we're not done with that yet. We're still doing that.
Okay, Tyce?
Not much, but Jeremy and I are meeting next week early on the, we have two new sensations we're gonna initiate next week. I'm gonna make sure all his notices are correct, online house and another one out there, where we're gonna start with Alton T Highway. We got the notices from the PSC today on Marinanta, the transfer of LeCleve. The staff at PSC has approved it, so the transfer will probably be in place in the next couple of weeks. That's all I have.
Okay. Anita?
I just have a few things, Mayor. During the recent storm event, we posted on Facebook and on the radio to conserve, and we never did go into peak where we had to pay extra for our electric or natural gas. The only way you all are gonna pay extra is by you use more. It won't be because of the cost of the product, so. The citizens, kudos to them for conserving the energy when we posted, and that worked out really well. I had several text messages, emails, and phone calls on what a great job Public Works did, and when we came back, I let Steve know so he could pass it on to the employees. I've been working with Ed Schott with the RAP sixty-six state park, Lower Merrimack Management. They have an Outpack neon sign that we would like to have for our neon park. They have to go through legislation to get it. Today I got my letter from State Representative Bill Hardwick on him recommending us to get that, so that was sent off, so we're waiting on that. There is a emergency management meeting on February the nineteenth at ten o'clock at the courthouse. They're looking for partnerships on emergency shelter locations. They put out in the flyer that the Red Cross will provide liability insurance to cover your building, and they'll reimburse for some out-of-pocket costs. So if you all know someone that has a facility, pass on the information on the ninth, February the nineteenth at the courthouse from ten to eleven. We're planning for Earth Day with Ozarks River Solid Waste Management District. The last couple of years, we've worked with the school, and the kids display their projects out in the Mallway. They have to have their projects turned in by March the eighteenth, and then they'll be delivered for a few weeks, and the public will be able to see the neat projects that come up there. I put in for us to host the Mid-Missouri Power and Energy Pool Meeting. That is a group of thirteen cities that we buy our electric power from. They'll either meet on the twenty-third or the March the seventh here, so I'm kind of excited about that. I have an annexation we'll have a public hearing on, and an ordinance for the next council meeting in Rockwood Estate. We have a meeting with the Neon Park this week. I have two signs out for bid. They're the lure signs. I had a picture, but I don't think you'll be able to see it. But it's a two-piece sign project. Those bids are due back on the fourteenth. And then after that, we only have two more signs to do that we currently have in our inventory. Been working with Lincoln on getting some of their signage for on the big marquee out by the road. They wanted a big park, and we just have two little ones, and you can't take the metal bar. It's welded in, so we're trying to work through that. The Chamber Luncheon is tomorrow at Greater Community Church at eleven-thirty. I'll get to see John there, I know. And then I also handed out the agenda that we just got right before council for the Community Leadership Awards banquet. I knew who was going, so I gave you all your little packet. That's about all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, we got a call from the postmaster down in Brush Creek back in November. They had a bunch of theft from the mailboxes down there. Police were working that. They ended up catching the two people, and it was ungodly amount, over a hundred thousand dollars, I guess it was, taken out of the post. They pull down there right after the mail guy every day and take all the mail. And so the post office is, I think it's twenty or thirty thousand dollars is buying lockable boxes, but they cannot by ADA put in the concrete slab, so I told them we'd do that. Just want to let you know, Steve and I are supposed to have a meeting in the next couple of weeks with the postmaster with the design and all that kind of stuff, so we'll take a look at that, and we got concrete people, so. With that.
Ricky's here.
Ricky, you want to give your report?
Sure. A little late, but never.
Yeah, probably working.
My report for February is wrote out eight hundred and twenty tons, and averaging is about one sixty-four right now. The last two days, we did two hundred and seventy-three, and today we did two hundred and thirty-one. So we had a low, we lowered eighty tons before I come over here, that's why I'm so late.
You want to tell them what happened Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Due to wonderful weather, we had, the transfer station was closed Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Waynesville routes was postponed until this Thursday and Friday, and we're gonna just clean them up when we get down there on their days to pick up.
How about Ridge Creek, right?
Ridge Creek?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's, there was picked up Monday, so.
Okay, they got it picked up.
Trash out, they got picked up.
Yeah, Monday and Tuesday, all the St. Robert roots were picked up.
Yes. St. Robertson was already done, so it was just Waynesville and all the recycling will be picked up this week.
Okay.
Get caught up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, our next regular Board of Alderman meeting is February twenty-second.
I think Walter had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you mind if I get the, uh?
Oh, okay, yeah. Mr. Wallace, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you for having us, everybody. Tonight we've got two white Waynesville seniors, Avery and Tessa, working for you guys. Thank you.
They don't want to get in front of the camera?
Okay, with that, the meeting's being closed pursuant to Missouri law, chapter six, ten dash oh two one, to include section one legal, or, I'm sorry, section two, real estate. Got a motion to go into closed session. Should be short. Michael makes a motion, Todd seconds, clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Charles.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Walter.
You.
Yes.
Teresa.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, with that, got a motion to.